Recording in progress.
Mr. Mayor, we like.
Great. Thank you for that. Today is October 19th, 2022, and the time is 7:09 PM, and I am calling to order the Ballpark City Council regular meeting. Pastor Jackson, do you mind leading us in invocation?
Father, we come to you in the name of the Lord. We're looking for your wisdom, your knowledge, and your understanding. According to your word, many plans in a man's heart, but only that that you establish will stand. We have an election that's coming up, and we need your wisdom in touching the hearts and minds of the people for that. We have turmoil that's going around the world, Lord, and we're asking you, Lord God, to bring forth peace, that peace of God throughout the whole world, touching our government and giving our president the right decision, the things to do to make it right for this nation in the name of the Lord. We're asking you to touch in the city council meeting, Father God, our mayor and all the councils, Lord God, and giving them the understanding of what they need to do for the city. Father, we have our schools, Lord, and our children, Lord God, and we have a lot of other things that's going on with our children outside the school and inside the schools, Lord, where there are gangs and there are drugs and breaking the power of that thing. And Father, as I look around the room, I see a lot of police officers here, Lord God, some that's going to be indoctrinated to services, Lord God, and also putting a hedge of protection around about them and bringing unity and peace and one accord in the police department, Father. We're asking you, Lord, to touch our soldiers that are abroad and our fire department, Lord, and our businesses that are here, Lord. We need your help and we need your hand, and we're asking for it. In the name of the Lord, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Hello, Marie. How are you doing?
Ah, good evening.
Good. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Please place your right hand over your heart, face the flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. You may go ahead and take a seat. City Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Alejandra Avila. Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Daniel Danyan.
Here.
Mayor Manuel Estrada.
Here. Thank you for that, City Clerk. City Attorney, do we have anything to report out from closed session, which has not, has not closed?
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier tonight, the city council convened as a special session to discuss only the closed session items. There were nine matters on the closed session agenda. City council did not get to all of the matters, and so they will be reconvening the special meeting to review the final three matters. But with respect to the matters that were on the agenda, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to Section 549, 56.9, D2, and E1, I should add, there were two potential cases for discussion, and we have no reportable action. No action was taken. There was also the matter of Rookley versus City of Baldwin Park, Setina Huerta Jimenez Parra versus City of Baldwin Park, and Christopher Cooberry Hemnway Finley versus City of Baldwin Park. City council heard a presentation from council on all of those items, and we have no reportable action. They provided direction. The final three items will be reconvening to discuss. I should also add that all members were present. However, with respect to the matter in Cooberry, Hemnway, and Finley, I should note that Mayor Protem Damián recused himself due to a conflict of interest and did not participate in the discussion of that matter. That concludes the report.
Great. Thank you for that, City Attorney. An important announcement. City council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. At this moment, we will move to proclamations, commendations, and presentations, and we will be doing a staff introduction and oath of office for our police officers. So at this moment, I am going to go ahead and ask those officers to come and join us up on the dais right here in front of this table. All right. So Alejandra, you're going to hold this microphone for me? All right. So before, real quick, we'll do some introductions. We'll do some officers. So I'm going to assume that they're all new officers. So we have Officers Carlos Mendez, Officer Jose Acosta, Officer Scott Rap, Officer Anna Valverde. Then we have Sergeants Noé Cervantes, Sergeant Philip Wenner, Sergeant Jose Castro, Sergeant William Zendejas, Sergeant Tony Gamboa, Sergeant Matthew Balzano, and we have Lieutenants Evan Martinez and Lieutenant Jeremy Cross. Oh, sorry, Martin, didn't fix this one. Lieutenant Evan Martin. Go ahead and ask you to raise your right hand. After me. I state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, born and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance, the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations.
Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to say thank you to the families, thank you to friends, thank you to everybody that's here. Witness a very important occasion for this department. It's historical to promote six sergeants and three lieutenants to this position. Here is historical. It hasn't been done before, and so we're seeing something that's really important to the community. In addition, you know, this wouldn't be possible without the vision and the support of the city council. This present city council has supported this department from the beginning and has made a difference. So I have the opportunity to make these promotions in addition to hiring eight police officers. We have vacancies that were filled by the promotions that we made and the things that we were doing, you know, doing our hirings to the standards of what the community is expecting. So it's, you know, my thanks to the council, thanks to the community for your support. This is going to continue. We're still shy of our goals, but we're getting there, and we're going to make a difference. So again, thank you to the officers. Thank you for being here, for, you know, the process that you all went through in order to get to this position, from the lieutenant to the sergeant to the officers. Thank you. And I think, again, you can't do without the support of the family. Please understand that it's going to be a tough time for all, as you all know about law enforcement. We miss special occasions, we miss birthdays, we miss anniversaries, those kind of things, not because we intentionally do it, it's because that's what we do for a living. But my thanks to you again for your support, for your vision and your understanding and your patience. It's a tough life. I lived it for 40 years with LAPD. I know the process, but this is a great organization. I'm very proud to be part of it. So thank you to you all. So we'll start off with Officer Anna Valverde. She is a graduate, comes from Los Angeles Police Department, the academy. She's a resident of La Puente and chose Baldwin Park PD. As she is drawn to our family-oriented police department, working class community. Angela, Anna has an associate degree in criminal justice. And I do get nervous when I'm speaking in front of people, so please forgive me. Officer Rap, Scott Rap, he grew up in Chino Hills, California, and obtained a bachelor's degree in aerospace engineering, Cal State. What a unique jump from aerospace to law enforcement. Thank you. Thank you for being here. He spent four years serving our country in the United States Navy, serving as a rescue swimmer. Amazing. Officer, yeah. Officer Jose Acosta grew up in West Covina and graduated from Rio Hondo Police Academy this past October. Acosta is also an entrepreneur who owns his own business and is a car enthusiast. Jose. Officer Carlos Mendez. Mendez is also a graduate of Rio Hondo and grew up in Pico Rivera. Mendez is currently working on his bachelor's degree and is interested in working gangs and improving the quality of life of the residents of Baldwin Park. Sergeant Matthew Balzano has been with the Baldwin Park Police Department since January of 2020. Prior to that, he served a combined 13 years working for both Imperial and Wider Police Departments. Some specialty assignments. His work include field training officer, corporal, range master, taser instructor, and patrol rifle instructor. So welcome, Sergeant. Sergeant Tony Gamboa. Sergeant Gamboa started his law enforcement career as a dispatcher for the Baldwin Police Department. He was hired as a police officer in 2006 and has been a K-9 handler, a police detective, training officer, and SWAT operator. So thank you for that. Sergeant Jose Castro. Sergeant Castro has been with the Baldwin Park Police Department since 2013. Since that time, he has been a gang detective, SWAT operator, a field training officer, tour advisor, and range master. Sergeant Philip Wenner has been with the Baldwin Park Police Department for 10 years. During that time, he has served as a patrol officer, field training officer, and detective. He's currently assigned, is currently a member of the department's Pride Platoon, which is our boot camp program that we run here at Baldwin Park, which I'm very proud of, and for at-risk youth. And he's also an integral part of our homeless outreach team that we have here as well. So thank you, Phil. Sergeant Aue Cervantes. Sergeant Cervantes has been with the Baldwin Park Police Department for 21 years. He has had the opportunity to be a gang detective, task force officer with HIDA, which is a task force group, a field training officer, and a corporal. He's a proud father of six who loves to spend time with his family and has just recently had a young daughter. What is it, two months ago? Yeah, about two months ago, so. Lieutenant Evan Martin. Lieutenant Martin comes to us with over 30 years of law enforcement experience, a majority of that with the Los Angeles Police Department, in addition to Costa Mesa and La Palma PD. He's a graduate of Cal State Long Beach Unit with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and he's got a wealth of knowledge relative to the things that we're looking to improve here at Baldwin Park. Thank you, Evan. Last but not least, Jeremy Cross. Jeremy, Jeremy comes from Vernon PD and has over 18 years of law enforcement experience. Lieutenant Cross also serves as a police academy coordinator at Rio Hondo Police Academy, so we have an in. So at least we do have an in, right? So anyway, he holds a master's degree in business administration. So as you can see, thank you, Jeremy. So as you can see, the selection is based on everything, the knowledge that we need to improve our process, to do a better, improve our service for the community, and make sure that we make it a safe place. There's a lot of things that this council has done and is projecting to do in the future for our businesses, our parks, and those kind of things. So I want to make sure that we're involved in that and that we police to that status, to that safety aspect that we're looking at. Again, my thanks to the council, thanks to the officers, and I'll present you with the... Oh, okay. Thank you. So I'll pass these out. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Definitely. We definitely want to welcome you to the Ballpark Police Department. And if you're already here, we're excited to see you grow. I know I've spent some time with some of you, especially Sergeant Wenner, who are out there with the sheriffs in the riverbed, learning about things. And it's always great to see our officers always striving to learn and making our city better. So I'm thankful. Also thankful for always being communicative and making it easy to work with the Ballpark Police Department. For the newer staff, we're very excited to have you here. We're very proud of you. Want to thank your families for letting you join our department. Best department in the valley, I promise you. You also got a cool mayor, too. So. But beyond that, we're very excited. We're working hard to make sure that we have a strong and supportive, and supportive, supported and supportive police department. We're making sure that we show the community what a great police department can look like, and I am confident that each and every single one of you will show our community a great relationship we can have with them. Thank you.
I also want to take this moment to congratulate every single one of you, congratulate all the new officers coming into our city. You are going to love it here, I can guarantee you. And congratulations to all of those that have gotten a promotion, well deserved, I'm sure. It should have happened some time ago, but it's here now. So congratulations. I'm very excited to have you all here, working together in this great community. But I want to thank their family, because it's not easy. I have a niece in LAPD, I always say, and I hear my sister whenever LAPD is on the news, "Alex, did you see what's on the news?" And she's all scared. She's getting used to it. So thank you. Thank you for lending us, your family members, brothers, sisters, uncles, whatever they are to you. Thank you. They mean the world to us, and so do you. They're not only our family now, but so are you. So you are welcome here anytime. I would like for all of you to please give our new officers and the promotions a standing ovation, please. And with that, I hope to see the families whenever we have community events here. Come and join us. They're a lot of fun. While your loved ones are working, you can be having fun along with us. Okay? So thank you and welcome. Congratulations again.
Very quickly, as the outgoing city clerk, but former city council member, I congratulate you all. Even though I'm outgoing, I'm still living here in Baldwin Park, and I expect to retire here. I just want to congratulate you. And the program that the chief mentioned, the Pride Platoon, is very near and dear to my heart. That is a program that I brought to the city when I was on city council to address the issues of the youth going in the wrong direction. So if your parents are here, I congratulate you because your kids, because you'll always be kids to them, went in the right direction. And so that's what we want to do with the youth of our community, and you are going to have that impact on those individuals. So thank you very much, and welcome to Baldwin Park.
Mayor.
Hi, Marie.
May I say something? I would like to welcome all the new officers, and I also would like to close our meeting on memory of a former finance director from Lupa Viella. She passed away two weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. We certainly will take care of that. First and foremost, I want to recognize our colleague, our instructor and friend from Covina, Mayor Protem Walter Allen. Thank you for everything that you've helped us educate, assist us. Again, thank you for that. As a former director of public safety, I understand the value of, you know, safety and feeling safe in our community. First and foremost, you're now part of our community, always have been, for those that have been here for quite some time. So what I'm really excited about today is, more importantly, is the opportunity of actually doing community policing, being out of your patrols, speaking with the residents, speaking with our business owners and our students that we have. This is an opportunity for you to be able to make sure that you make a positive impact on the individuals that you're interacting. I understand that sometimes you may not have the best interactions with individuals because of, for whatever reasons they may have. But I understand that, you know, every one of you have a compassion. That's the reason for why you join law enforcement, is you want to help others. With that, I want to thank you for taking this bold career, for the new ones, and for those that moved up in the ranks. You are now, you know, part of our leadership, as you always were, and that includes the ones that are starting off. You have an opportunity to make sure that the rank and files and your colleagues understand the direction and the culture that we want to have, one that is open, one that is progressive, one that is helpful. So I'll leave you with those words, because again, the reason for why we all do what we try to do is we're trying to help and uplift others. And of course, to the family members, thank you again. As the council member said, this is a great opportunity. We are certainly happy and thankful that you allowed them to be part of our family. And as we stated earlier, you're now part of our family. So we hope to see you at future events. Thank you.
Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to congratulate these officers and welcome the new officers to our community. I also want to congratulate the family who have been there to support and encourage and who will be there moving forward to support these officers. And I just want to say that Baldwin Park is a wonderful community. I echo my colleague's comments and want to add to Councilmember Hernandez's comments in that we are all here to serve this community and uplift our community and the members of our community. And so I hope that you'll have a very positive experience, and I hope that you will feel the support from this council and also from your chief and others in the department, as well as across the organization that is the city of Baldwin Park. And I just want to also just end, you know, saying that I look forward to promoting a safe Baldwin Park and, you know, seeing you out there. And you're absolutely a reflection of the city. So wear that badge with great honor and, you know, the will to serve the community, compassion, of course. But we look forward to working with you and ensuring that our community is safer because you're here. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll make mine brief. First of all, to all of our newly sworn officers, welcome to the city of Baldwin Park. We are excited to finally see more of our police officers being hired and being brought out to the community. To our current police officers that have been with the city of Baldwin Park, congratulations on your promotions, very well deserved. Look forward to continuing to work with you and support our police department in any way possible. So again, congratulations to all of you and to the families. Thank you very much.
Just a reminder that we are moving forward to a stronger community-based policing process. Again, with the numbers that we're getting now, the staffing that we're getting that, we will achieve that. So we are getting out of the police cars, we're engaging with our community members and doing that on a regular basis. That's my direction, and that's where we're going to go. So you're absolutely right. We're already beginning that process. We will continue to strengthen that with the days to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, of course, we want to acknowledge our chief. Chief, you've been here almost two years. Over two years. He keeps breaking records here. It's crazy. So, there's a lot of water everywhere. Don't worry about it. So before we finish celebrating you all, I want to ask our officers to go to the front. We'll take a nice picture with them, and then we'll get as many of you as possible in there. But first, a nice formal picture with our officers and the council, and then we'll move on to the families.
So now, the families, if you can come up and stand right here in the front, find your police officer. Let's play Find Your Police Officer and stand in front of them so you can take a picture right here, right in the front. Some of you may have a lot, so let's squeeze in there. Officers, come to the front so they can find you. They can stand right in front of you. They're still setting up to my right. So if you all set up in front of your police officers, we're going to take a great big picture. Where's your officers? Carlos Mendez, where are you? There you are. If you can squeeze in over here, come on over here. Aquí, mira, aquí enfrente.
Aquí mira, aquí enfrente. All right, so now, there is a reception next door at the arc for our officers and our families. If, if you need to, if you would like to take a picture up here by the city emblem, you could do that, officers with your family. We have about 10 minutes for you guys to do that. You want to do that? Yes, yes. So, you're the connection, sir? All right.
Veronica.
Do you guys still need to take a picture? Yeah. Thank you so much. I'm going to go down here, Paul, and take a picture. And then I'm going to...
You want to take a picture with him or you want to...
I do, I do.
I wish ours looked this nice.
Really? What? I can't wait to see what you guys have.
I'm doing well, how about yourself?
We're going to still be in the same room, but they're just doing a makeover.
We're going to have brand-new seats, the coloring of the walls, the paneling, this is going to go, this is terrible.
Oh, yeah, this, this is...
This makes you dizzy. It kind of reminds me of Almonte Park House.
It kind of hurts your eyes, doesn't it?
It gets you dizzy, you just look up. So, we, where we model it, soon. This is all, look at this.
Oh, by the way, this, you couldn't hire a better city attorney.
Yeah, I do.
It is a pleasure again meeting you.
Likewise.
If you need anything from Covina or want to do anything, like I said, we're working on Quiet Zone. I knew you guys had...
Now you tell me you're on the metro scene.
I'm an alternate member. And I'm Patrick Barker. I, I'm going to represent...
You better not get that quiet zone before us.
Yeah, no, no, no. You guys don't have it before us.
Well, can you hold them for a second, okay?
We are at Quiet Zone, kind of ready, that our offices have been upgraded, but we have to progress to do... Hey, sir.
Hey, I'm Paul, sir.
You guys are... Well, now, how are you?
Hey, I'm Paul. Oh, yeah, we have a lot of connections. I've hooked up with everyone twice.
So exciting, so exciting. We're still show officers.
He says we're still going to be up on it.
Yeah, he says.
I've heard you once.
You still playing?
I caught ninety other three. I'm an RTO. And I thought...
I know when.
I don't know, I haven't seen him since he had surgery.
There's a reception line next door, so one time, yes. Can you remind everybody of the reception next door?
We still got a meeting.
We still have a meeting, yes.
All right. So... Are we bringing them on, Paul, over here? Okay.
Oh, kids. Oh, that's wonderful.
You guys didn't come to us, we came to you. Check this out, turn around, Maya, told me you're here.
Oh, my God, that's beautiful.
Oh, what do you have?
Do you need more space? Oh, yeah.
Very nice, where's Mr. Mendoza? Is he here? Is he here?
Now you guys can see... He's not here today.
No, I don't think he's here today. No, I run the, I run the meetings, which means that I use this to keep people listening and stuff like that. Same thing, right? Oh, nice, okay. Because I'm here all the time, so I have to eat something. Okay, ready? Hold on, okay? Let's see. Okay. All right, all right. You guys ready? Okay. So, we have some special guests today. The Tough Kids came out and they're going to pay attention to our agenda, is what I hear. They're going to lobby for some good votes, but they also want to show off their, their new uniforms, they have the city logo on them and their backpacks.
And we, we're going to have to pick some of them up, Coach Gerg, because they can't see them.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Adam, since you're the mayor of Tough Kid Land? There you go.
Okay, look at, look at their uniforms with the city logo. They do wrestle at Morgan Park. And this last Saturday, they, you had a tournament, correct? How did you do at that tournament?
Uh, we took eleven, we placed ten in the top three, and the other one was in fourth place. You want me to do it too? All right. All right. This is one of our Tiny Tots, he's in our Tiny Top program, which is three and four-year-olds. They practice on Wednesdays.
Hi.
All right. Okay?
If you're interested in going to see their practices, they're at Morgan Park, way in the back behind the gym, they have a cool wrestling room in there.
Yeah, Aunt Miss Abula came to visit us. It was a, a fun trip, she got to see them wrestle. Boys and girls? Come here, come here, Leanna. This is one of my, my toughies. So, girls do wrestle too?
She wrestled this weekend, right?
She wrestled this weekend. She took one of our fourth place.
All right.
Tournament. There's about forty-five clubs there and we did very well. We have a Tiny Tots program, three and four-year-olds on Wednesdays. We have Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday with the four to fourteen. We have the high school open for Monday, Wednesday and Friday for Ball Park High School in Ceravista. And hopefully in the next month or so, we'll have the adult program for the police and firemen to come in on Saturday morning. That's the plan before the end of the year. So, I just wanted to bring the kids down here. I know the city hall is very busy, so they didn't come to see us, so we came to see them, right?
And Coach, how long has Tough Kids? Coach, how long has Tough Kids been in existence?
This year will be twenty, twenty-two years in Ball Park. And we got, I believe it's a ten-year lease at, at Morgan Park, so it'll be another twenty, another ten years.
All right.
At least, as long as my joints hold up. Okay, all right. Got one more to lift, I don't know, I can lift her. She has an invite, where's your invite? You got an invite? That's for... Mr. Mendoza. We're going to have Invite Your Teacher Night on November second, right? So, all the teachers are invited from every school, right? Okay, say it, I invite all the teachers.
I'm going to invite all the teachers to come on this festival.
Yeah. We do have our assistant superintendent, vice superintendent.
Oh, there's, she could give that to Mr. Mendoza.
Ms. Salazar.
Dr. Salazar.
Go take it to her, she's right there. All right. Wait, wait. So, the last question, where's Hannah? Okay. Maya, you good there? You all right? So... Okay, all right. This is one of my, my heavy hitters right here. This is Maya. You're four, Maya? Four? She's four years old. She's, uh, ready to go, so show your muscles, show your muscles. All right.
Coach, can you introduce our former Tough Kids, which are now our coaches here, please?
What's great, the kids come back to coach with us. We have Luna Vias here, she wrestled for me almost fifteen years ago. She's a girls' coach back with us. Carlos Sanchez, he's, uh, he graduated last year, he's back with us. He wrestled for Tough Kids for almost eight years. Our other coach that's dealing with the high school right now is Adam Lopez, he wrestled for me almost twenty years ago. And he's the varsity coach at Ceravista High School now. And he's actually, this is... She's, she's, uh, Adam's mom, so, uh, so, uh, he's at the high school right now, dealing with the high school math and that. But, uh, when they don't have the room at the gym over there, which has been problems over the years, Ball Park don't have a gym now, they have a place to practice with us Monday, Wednesday and Friday now, so that's what we plan to do with that room. And Manny's not here, but since, uh, where's my, where's Leanna? So, Manny's not here, but Maria's here. You see that lady right there? Everybody has this question every day. So, go ahead and ask Maria.
When are we going to swim?
Tell her, swim, tell her, tell her.
When are we going to go into swim?
They're working on it, okay, they're working on it, okay? That's been the question since August first, so... I, I want to thank the mayor, the city. There was a major grant that was implemented for us this year, which there's about, right now, we're at sixty kids total in Tough Kids right now, as of today. And about thirty-two or thirty-four of them are utilizing the grant that was implemented this year so they could wrestle free. So, uh, the registration has been paid for by the city of Ball Park for the next six months. So, I, I want to thank Ball Park, I want to thank everybody for the room, for the facility, for the, all the help Manny and the parks has given me. And, and, uh, I couldn't ask for more, I just wanted to bring the kids down, so they were a little, uh, a little cabin fever in the room, so I said, "Let's go take a walk", you know? Uh, we came down to take a walk. And Mayor, if we could take a picture in front, we'll get out of your hair.
Yeah, I want to take, you know what, yeah, let's take a picture over there and then we can have them sit on the bench.
All right. All right, let's go over there, you guys. Get in the line, get in the line. Go, 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 go.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Yes. Okay, let's get out of here. All right. All right. Nice seeing you, you're good, miss.
Nice seeing you too.
I want to call you. Right here.
No, get up, Maya.
Adam, right here, Adam. Adam, right here.
As long as I can get up here.
All right. Down a little bit. Three.
I heard you remind Grandma.
Good for you, Matt.
I was, yes.
It's not staying, it's see...
This one is the one that needs.
Are you welcome?
Alright. Of course, of course, of course. Uh, that's mine. It's 'cause they were like, looking at all, they were looking at all the stuff on my desk. So, I just gave them a bit of a second. I probably riled them up more with the sugar, huh? Alright. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and continue. Believe it or not, council chambers sometimes get louder for worse reasons, so...
This is great. This is a good reason to get loud.
Nice to have visitors. So, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and open up public communications. If you are looking to speak, you may go ahead. Yes, don't forget to turn on the mic, okay?
Alright. Mayor, City Council, City Clerk. I guess the chief is not here, but, uh, good evening.
Good evening.
I am here in behalf of the American Legion. My name is Rudy Abalar. United States Air Force Veteran, Persian Gulf. I am here to request for an extension of our grant. Uh, we sent a written, or, request through the Department of Housing. I don't know if you received it. If you didn't receive it, I hope you accept this as a formal request. Uh, our, our grant will be terminated as of the twenty-sixth, which is next week. So, I am requesting for an extension. Next thing is the, uh, the business license. We started our renovation at our post with the four contractors that started our job. The quotes were sent to the city, approved, they did the work. We submitted the invoices, and they got paid. And then, the housing came down and said that we needed a business license. This was not told from us from the beginning. It was not part of the stipulation on the grant. So, I am asking for a waiver for these four vendors that already did their job. Now, any other contractor that comes in, we will mandate that they have a business license. Uh, the next thing is for our chief, but he's not here. I will still address it. Uh, our safety or our security system was updated six months ago. It turned out to be too good. So, any moment, any movement within the building triggers the alarm system. So, we have a few, actually, we have multiple false alarms, and we're asking for a waiver on those, uh, false alarms. The next thing is the Thanksgiving. Uh, we're requesting any donations from the city for our don, our Thanksgiving dinners. Uh, we have only, not only for our vets, but it's for the community too. So, whoever needs a Thanksgiving dinner, just come on in, take it home, or you could eat it there. So, let me recap. I am, uh, requesting for an extension on the grant, the waiver on the business license. Let me, uh, extend on the business license. Because we didn't have business license, our funds were frozen. One of our contractors did not get paid, because the funds were frozen. So, they threatened us to get sued, and in order for us not to get sued, we paid them off out of our pocket. So, we're in the hole right now. So, we need that, that funds unfrozen, please.
Sorry, sir, your time is up.
Thank you.
And then, I know...
Please give me a call, uh, on what, what's your request, I mean, your, our request, what you guys say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did bring that up at the last meeting, so we wanna make sure we can take care of that.
Yes, and that's on, uh, on, uh, the CEO's desk for signature.
Great, thank you. Uh, Chief Deputy City Clerk, is there anybody that filled out a sheet, or Chief, or City Clerk, is there anybody that filled out the speaking sheet?
Yes, Mayor, we did receive two requests, uh, for phone call. Uh, one is Catherine Lozier, our Community Library Manager of the City of Baldwin Park Library. She would like to provide library updates. So, we will call her now.
Hi Catherine, this is Lilo from, calling from the City of Baldwin Park, um, regarding your request to speak.
Yes, thank you so much.
Sure, whenever you'd like, um, your time will start as soon as you start speaking.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potent, and members of the council community. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to announce a program that we'll be having in person on Friday, October twenty-eighth, from ten-thirty a.m. to eleven a.m. This is a bilingual English-Spanish storytime with Mama Maestra. It's, uh, a performer event. There'll be music and stories for little ones, uh, in both Spanish and English, and this is for children ages three to five and their parents and caretakers. More to come on that morning's event. Then, October is our annual Teen Read Month event. We have a special reading program just for teens. It's a bingo program. Teens may read any books or participate in library programs or services, and they can check off their bingo sheet, get five squares in a row, either vertically, horizontally, or diagonally, and they can bring in the sheet to their nearest library and be entered into a drawing for prizes. And then, we also have our community feedback session, still in progress. Our last one will be taking place on Wednesday, October twenty-sixth, from five-thirty to six-thirty p.m. Uh, this is gathering members of Supervisory District Two, but all members, uh, from any district are welcome to join. We definitely wanna hear from you. And this community session will have live virtual, uh, chats, as well as virtual real-time polls. And participants have an opportunity to share their input on upcoming library programs, services, and materials. And anybody who participates does win, or, excuse me, does get entered into a drawing to win library swag, a Kindle, or gift cards which have been generously donated by the L.A. County Library Foundation. And then, if you don't have time to attend that evening, you are welcome to fill out a survey online. And then, for more information on any of our programs, services, or, or materials, please visit us on the web at lacountylibrary.org. In person at the library or give to call at six-two-six-nine-six-two-six-nine-four-seven. Thank you all so much for all that you do, and thank you and have a wonderful evening. Bye-bye.
Mayor, we received a second request from Paul Cook for a phone call.
Okay. Uh, yeah, to the members of the public, my name's Paul Cook. I'm an attorney at law. I'm a resident of this city now for thirty, thirty-four plus years, and I'm just, um, calling because I'm very glad that Robert Tafoya has been fired. He was one of the most corrupt and evil people that I knew. I've known him for nine years. And, um, during the time that I've known him, he's forged my signature in a case. Um, he, he cussed out me in court before. He threatened to kill me. He has, he filed false restraining orders, lying to the court about stuff that I didn't do. With Mayor Lozano's case, he said that I jumped up and down on a table. He falsely accused Greg Tuttle. Uh, just a, a business owner that's doing right for the city. And, uh, for basically holding the city accountable when they went to Santa Barbara. And then, uh, under Rob, Robert Tafoya's direction, they falsely accused me of ramming into Rose Tam's car. Um, on top of that, he was charging a million dollars a year to the city in attorney's fees. He was a crook. He was a crook. And not only was he a crook, we told everybody at the city council that he was a crook multiple times. And so, you guys were on notice. You guys knew he was a crook. And you guys kept him on, because he basically did anything that, that you guys wanted, and that's not right. You know, and he's basically enabled your corruption, your psychopathy, your sociopathy, and you guys don't represent the city anymore. You guys represent yourself, and you guys are super corrupt, and you guys make everybody look bad. He's made you look so bad in front of the public. Ball Park is known as the New York City of Bell and the Nuevo Tijuana, Nuevo Tijuana of California, or if not, the United States. And, you know, we've told you, and like I said, you know, he, uh, it's just, you guys are a corrupt city council. I am so glad you guys are being exposed. I mean, you guys have done such evil things, such as firing Julian Casa, the boxing coach, working there for twenty years, 'cause he asked for a forty cent an hour raise. No, you guys gave him a forty cent an hour raise, 'cause you didn't give him a raise after twenty years, while you guys have given yourselves outlandish raises, cars, everything. And I just hope next that Rose Tam, who's cooking the books, and Manny Correo, who was laundering money, you guys go down too. And I hope that Monica Garcia goes down. She's a crook, and, um, we've been saying that, and we know Paul Hernandez is a crook, that he, he's basically stolen money using a Chinese developer, and I remember when he started, he's such an imposter, he's such a fraudster, he used to tell everybody he worked for the FBI. The FBI would never hire somebody like that, just look at him. You know, he is, this is the only kind of position he could get to feel important about himself, and he's based, all of you guys are just stealing from the city. And we're sick and tired of it, and I'm glad you guys are getting exposed, so that's my piece. And I just hope that you guys do the right thing and tell the truth, and maybe confess what you've done.
Those are all the written requests we received, Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk. If anybody else would like to speak at this time, uh, now is your chance.
Hello, City Council. As usual, I come here to reject those two people that aren't here. I know they gave an excuse, but, you know, it's over. We're all wearing no mask, maybe one or two people, so what the hell's their holdup? I, I know you guys don't have excuses for them. They make their own. Thank you. Anyhow, another complaint I have, I have a lot of them. You guys put all these petitions on the ballot. You must've spent a couple million dollars for all these so-called benefits of Ball Park. You're not benefiting anybody in your guys' pocket, all of you guys up here that work for the city of Ball Park. That's all you're benefiting. You're not giving any benefit to the residents of Ball Park. What do you give us? More taxes, more city taxes, more taxes? Every time I hear you people speak, "Oh, we're getting a donation from Uncle Sam." Uncle Sam gives you nothing free. You know that. If it costs eighty million dollars, we gotta pay twenty of that. Where do you get all this money? Look at this. You got eleven million dollar bond, so claimed, or whatever. You think it's free? No, it's not free. Nothing's free in this country. As you can find out, lawyers make all kinds of money fighting our constitution, our civil rights, and on and on and on. One lawyer, boy, he's not in here anymore. He resigned, at least that's what they tell us. I think you people need to understand, and I'm gonna say it nice and loud, so everybody here, I wish all those other people would've stayed here, so they could hear my remarks. You people work for all of us in the city of Ball Park. You don't work for any individual person that sits in this counter. You wanna build a new city hall, or whatever in the heck you wanna build, we gotta pay for it. You think it's free? If it was free, you'd have put down here eleven million dollars free. It's not free. Another complaint I have. I wanna see your police department, Mayor, show off in our neighborhood more often. I live on the other side of the freeway. I can count how many times they come through our neighborhood. And you people just hired a bunch of more guys or promoted them. I hope they do a better job. 'Cause you guys aren't doing enough to protect our citizens of Ball Park.
Your time is up, sir.
You gotta, oh, I'm sorry. I ran out of my time, gentlemen and ladies. I know, he was gonna throw me out. John Reals, resident of Ball Park for forty-five years. Has seen the ups and downs, okay? One of the things, finally, he got rid of the lawyer, which is beautiful. Everybody in the city is grateful for that. The worst part of it is that it had to come out in the paper again and again, where you guys should do so. I told you, Mayor, two years ago, you have a lot of corrupt people in the city council, in, in city hall. You gotta listen to the old parts, like myself. I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to run the city. I'm just trying to give you a piece of advice. You know, one of the things, it's election...
You know, one of the things, it's election year. Sorry to say, but I had to take El Diablo back out. You know who I mean? Because we don't want him. I prefer you. I have problems with you, but you're learning. You're trying to listen to the community, which is good. I'm trying to work with Anthony, I'm probably works on the spots that are very dirty in the city. I just talked to him yesterday, he went around and saw what I was talking about. There's a lot of spots in the graffiti on the weekends, forget it. Anthony told me that he has some, some people working on the weekend sometimes, but we're gonna start hitting the graffiti, which is not nice to see for one thing. Then the street vendors, you know, we have to get to a point, Enrique, we gotta take their stuff away. That's the only way you're gonna keep them out of here. I know that you have Saturdays, you have a couple of code enforcement working in there. But on Sundays, Friday, Saturday and Sundays, we get them in. We got some taqueros again, I had to call Carlos on it. You know, because if you give him a little inch, he'll take a whole foot. We gotta be strict, and Carlos is doing his job. I called him up this afternoon before I came to the meeting, and I told him where was that taquero. I went by and I talked to that taquero, I told him, you cannot be here. And that's when I called Carlos. They picked up and they left.
Time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me have a translator. I wanna thank the mayor and council for the five oh vote to get rid of a corrupt, dirty city attorney. We are also in the process of getting him fired out of Rialto Water Board also.
Gracias por permitirme el uso del intérprete. Quiero agradecer al señor alcalde por haberse deshecho del corrupto abogado de la ciudad. También estamos tratando hacer lo mismo en un consejo en la ciudad de Rialto.
I have on my hit list Monica Garcia, Paul Hernandez, Rose Tam, and Manny Carrillo next on the list.
Tengo en mi lista de posibles eliminados a Monica Garcia, Paul Hernandez. Rose Tam and Manny Carrillo.
I wanna tell anybody that's listening, you need to vote no on Measure BP. It's raising your prop, your, your taxes, and you will be paying much more money for sales tax, three quarters of a percent.
Quiero decir a todos los que están escuchando que voten no en la medida de Baldwin Park Measure. Esto va a incrementar sus impuestos y van a pagar más impuestos, eh, un porcentaje... tres cuartos de porcentaje, tres cuartos de uno porciento.
I'm going to read a statement that a guy emailed me, Daniel Rodriguez, who you have a lawsuit with.
Voy a leerles la declaración de un individuo que me escribió, Daniel Rodriguez, con quien ustedes tienen un pleito.
Hernandez, through Shannon, via email, directed Daniel Rodriguez to buy fifty thousand dollars worth of hand sanitizer on May twenty twenty from a...
Hernandez, a través de Shannon, ordenó a Daniel Rodriguez que comprara cincuenta mil dólares en un producto de limpieza sanitaria de manos en el veinte de mayo.
This guy lives down the street from Hernandez, is a big campaign donor, donor for him.
Este individuo vive a media cuadra de Hernandez y es un gran contribuyor a su campaña electoral.
This man is a friend of Hernandez. He got a consultant job after this was all done, after they made the city spend twice the amount of money for their COVID supplies.
Este hombre, eh, que tiene una firma de consultaría, obtuvo un trabajo después de haber hecho gastar el doble de lo que te hubiera costado.
This man's name is Art Alcon. I can't pronounce it right, but it's close enough. This man here got a token job as a consultant for the police department for one year for twenty-four thousand dollars.
Este hombre, cuyo nombre es Art Alcon, no sé si estoy pronunciando correctamente su nombre, pero es más o menos así, obtuvo un premio por haber hecho un trabajo de consultaría con la policía por veinticuatro mil dólares.
Hernandez conspired to waste city money and overspend on all this COVID supplies that the city used.
Hernandez conspiró de gastar este dinero en comprar estos suplementos, estos artículos con dinero de la ciudad.
I've turned this information over to the FBI, which will be going to the DOJ, just like they're going with the DOJ with Chief Taylor, with Robert Taffoya, and also Monica Garcia is the name down on this.
Eh, he entregado esta información al FBI, que a su vez será entregada al departamento o al Ministerio de Justicia, y incluye al jefe Taylor, Robert Taffoya, y Monica Garcia está incluida también.
So this investigation is just starting, and it will end very quickly because we have enough proof and a witness with emails for this, and I hope the city takes it under review.
Esta investigación, que acaba de empezar, va a terminar rápido porque tenemos muchas pruebas que pueden presentarse, y espero que la ciudad participe en esta revisión.
Now, I gave the city manager, I don't know how many months ago, a packet with Lozano. And I told you how much money his family owes the city, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Eh, le he dado una información al administrador de la ciudad con la información de Lozano. Eh, esta información incluye algo montos que, alrededor de veinticinco mil dólares.
His father got a loan on his house when Manny was a mayor. And when he did, passed away, the loan was never taken care of, and the city needs to collect that twenty-five thousand.
El, su padre obtuvo un préstamo cuando Manny era el alcalde, y cuando falleció el padre, este préstamo nunca se pagó, entonces la ciudad necesita colectar estos veinticinco mil dólares.
I wanna thank the police chief, one of those rare times, I'm thanking you on that thing, but new officers, and I hope they can do us a good job.
Your time is up, sir.
And I'm happy for it. Thank you.
Quiero agradecer al jefe de la policía, rara vez le agradezco, pero quiero hacerlo esta vez, y espero que estos agentes de policía que han sido contratados hagan un muy buen trabajo. Gracias.
Good evening, Mayor, elected officials. Few citizens of Baldwin Park. It's terrible that we don't have any thirty-year-olds, forty-year-olds, fifty-year-olds in here telling you when you're doing right and when you're doing wrong. Unfortunately, seems like most of the time, there's nobody here to point it out to you. These individuals did. And I'll word it a little bit different. One of them has been asking, where's the other members that are missing, elected? Could you have a direct answer, maybe just for my benefit? Are they getting paid? Or do, when they run, do they have to declare, I am of sound mind, of sound health, I will be able to perform my duties? What excuses is there? Now, on the positive side, we did have some awards and police that has, we have added on more police, and I say that is on the positive side, and I wished them all good health, good luck. Now, what do I have? After seeing so many things that are wrong, I said, gee, I can't even address this. So I'll just go outside and to, going into some of the things that are, I'm still very much against the CB. Now, I asked the mayor, well, not exactly the mayor, but he answered it, and I thank him for that, being very brief. I'm still very much against it. Now, if we can control cigarette sales in Baldwin Park, why can't we control this? Now, yes, funds that come out, grants, you were told, they're not free. Somebody pays for it. No grants, county, state, federal, they are not free. Somebody's gonna pay for it. If we're not paying right now from it, your son or your grandkids are gonna be paying for it. And that is something that, why the cost of living is so high. I believe it was the mayor that pointed out to the police department that we would like to see them outside their role. And I'm assuming that it's a mingle in the community. I never see anyone of my officials over here, out in the community, at Sunday services, shopping, or anything at all. In order to know how the city feels, through your residents, you'll have to go out there and mingle. The bicycle path, I would like to see at least somebody use in it. I never see more than one person.
Good evening, my name is Abel, and I've been in Baldwin Park for over forty-two years. I'm a businessman. And the comment I have tonight is that I have spoken with many of my clients who have been complaining about the rob, the robbery of their catalytic converters. And the police has been summoned, and the police, sometimes they don't come, and when they come, they take reports, but there's not much they can do. And we, we have more police officers now, and I think it's time to improve this. Eh, the other complaint I have is in regards to the homeless individuals that are coming back to Baldwin Park, and I've been trying to keep them away, but they can be aggressive and they can attack me, and so, and that's not my job. So the police needs to do that, and if I would try to handle one, then ten show up. And the council needs to interact a little bit more, they need to come out and interact with the community, be out on the streets to see, and to do, sometimes it's really dirty, and then they clean it up, and I take pictures of all this to show this, and then they, they get it dirty again, and this is very expensive, and frankly, this expense is covered by us taxpayers. I also wanna thank Anthony and Sam because when there's a problem with neighbors, and I've called them, they have been very helpful and have assisted me. Uh, the other comment I have is in regards to the increment of the tax. I don't want you to increment the tax because I will have to pay more. I buy a lot of stuff in Baldwin Park, and I'm gonna have to pay more. Also, we want no corruption in Baldwin Park. We don't need corrupt people, and we wanna work together with government, and the corruption will be something negative. And when we voted for the mayor, for the council members, we vote for them because we want them to do what we want, and we want them to be good people. We don't want to be stabbed in the back. That is all, thank you for listening.
Great. If nobody else is looking to speak, I will move to close public communications. And we will go ahead.
Mayor, if I may, before you go to consent calendar?
Yes, go ahead, council member, I mean, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to close on behalf of Carmen Munoz. She was a longtime resident of the city of Baldwin Park. She passed away last Saturday at the age of ninety-three, and I just wanna send her condolence, our condolences to the Munoz family. And just very briefly, touching on Measure BP and some of the ballot measures that they said, we spent millions of dollars on to put on the ballots. We only put four ballot measures on. The other one, Measure CB, was put on by that committee that, in the signatures for the ballot, but I just want to clarify that we didn't spend additional money to put those ballot measures on the ballot. There was a cost for the amount of either two or five that you would put on. But most importantly, if you look at the ballot measures and you read the ballot measures, you're coming to complain about the past administrations or corruption. If you look at that, we are maintaining our accountability and transparency on the city council. And one of the, some of the ballot measures that we have are term limits, campaign limits, and rotating mayor. So I don't think that those ballot measures would be put on if you're a corrupt politician. Also, on Measure BP, which is a sales tax, we hear a lot about the streets being dirty, we're not having, not having enough staff, enough police. Well, all of this costs money, so what we need to do is find a solution, how we're gonna be able to address all of these issues, and making sure that we have the adequate revenue to be able to cover expenses, to be able to move into the future and have this there for future generations to come. So that's the reason why Measure BP was on there, among other things. But I would recommend our residents to go onto our website, get educated, educate yourself as to what Measure BP is all about, or speak to us, you know, ask us, feel free to reach out to me personally, or come out to some of our educational community meetings, and ask us questions. We're here for transparency, and we would be more than happy to have an open dialogue with you guys. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I just wanna reiterate your comments. We put those ballot measures on there so that the community could decide on these things. Term limits are incredibly important. I think it's up to the community to decide on that. Voting for the top three vote-getters instead of a mayor and two... Voting for top three vote-getters instead of a mayor and two council members, I think that's an important topic. And campaign contributions, hearing about this money going around and how we feel that certain things are conflicts of interest. Well, it's important that you vote on these. We want you to have a say in these efforts. You know, not everything is, as council members, we're here to make a lot of decisions, but I think that there are certain decisions that have to be reinforced by the community. And some of those are on that ballot measure. Once you reinforce and you decide whether you want these things or not, council can come back and change them up, right? And so if you feel that there is more need for transparency, more need for watchdogs, then these ballot measures are there for you. We just wanna reiterate on that. And then, so, we are at consent calendar, and we have items one through eight. So if there's any items council would like to pull, I'd like to pull item number three. Item five, please. Item five, any other items?
Mayor, did, um, did you pull item number eight, I believe it was? Number four, number four.
Okay. We have three, four, and five, is there any other items? Sorry, uh, I made a mistake, it was not five, it was four, but that's fine. So we can move five on consent. Items, so it's items three and four. So I'll make a motion to pass a consent calendar excluding items three and four. Can I get a second? Uh, city clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor Manuel Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila? Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that. And so item number three is the city financial assistance for Baldwin Park Unified School District, student field trips, operating agreement in form of a memorandum of agreement. And so, you know that we've been kinda talking about this for a couple of months. Just wanna reiterate what a big deal it is for the city to be working with the Baldwin Park Unified School District. And, you know, for some reason, it's just not common for the schools and the cities to be working together, not just here, but in general, right? And so, a lot of the times, we hear a lot of kind of fighting about jurisdictions, and we should be working together. And the truth is that Baldwin Park students are Baldwin Park residents. And as we talk about wanting our children to have opportunities, as we want them to be safer, as we want them to grow up and have those advantages that other cities have, we have to work together. And so, you know, as one of the only, one of the only parents on this council, I understand how important that is. So I wanna make sure that, that the next generation of children have opportunities regardless of their zip code. And I always mention that, how important it is to make sure that working-class children and children of color, regardless of their income status or their family's income status, have these opportunities because this is gonna help them develop better, younger, healthy adults. And it gives them those opportunities. I know some of the school district administration and I went to support one of the students in New York, and I thought it was such a great idea. Her mom wasn't able to go because she had to work full-time, and she just wasn't able to take the time. And so, the school district to take time out of their day to support their student, I think is a big deal. We wanna make sure that more students have that opportunity to go out and see beyond Baldwin Park, develop, see what's out there, that they learn that there's a bigger world out there, and they bring, and they hopefully bring back those ideas that make Baldwin Park better. So I think that item number three is an important, very, very big step that we're taking. I'm very excited. If any council members have any comments?
Yes, mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Avila.
Thank you for your comments. I absolutely agree that our children need more opportunities, and we do need to work together with the school district because they are our residents. As a former parent of Baldwin Park Unified School District students, and back then is when the cuts started, you know, from the performing arts to different field trips taken away from our students because of budgeting, we shouldn't separate them and us. Them, Baldwin Park Unified School District, and the city were all the same people. We work together, we work for the same goals, to, to build leaders. So working as a city with a district is what we should be doing, not only today, but we should continue it in the future for the future generations so that the children do have those opportunities like the one that you took to New York. Because, like you said, a lot of kids have never been out of Baldwin Park. This is the first place that they have lived in, and they probably don't even see themselves out of Baldwin Park. But if we help give those opportunities, it would be amazing for them. It would open their eyes and have more opportunities in life. So I definitely agree with item number three. Thank you.
Mayor, please? Yes, Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you. I appreciate bringing this item. That's why I was very excited to, you know, double the money when it was brought to us from the first time to sixty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand. Because again, you know, as all, each of you have already mentioned, the positive outcomes that come out with having new experiences. My only thing that I have, and this is for staff or maybe for the school district, is how are we going to prioritize or allocate the money amongst elementary, middle school, and high school students? There's nothing in the report that speaks to that, so can I just get some clarification on that?
Yeah, I will address it first, Councilmember Hernandez, and of course Angela, Dr. Angela is here as well. So you, you saw, not just in the report, but in the agreement, that we stipulated three different categories of, of the types of field trips that would be eligible for funding. And one is being able to expand existing field trip opportunities. These are field trips that the school district already runs, has, has had in their, in their portfolio for some time, but it's limited to the number of students that it can reach. That category would expand the number of students that could participate in that. So that is intended for be eligible for all the schools, not just one level of school, one type of school. Then there's a category number two, which would be new field trips for the schools. School, field trips that some schools have never, had not yet identified in the past, so will be doing for new. And then category three will be for the school district level kind of field trips, the more complex field trips such as going to Sacramento, going to Washington DC, New York, those that require more organizing, in some cases even a third party that will come in, the school district will bring on board to be able to organize and, and do all the logistics planning. So those three categories. The intent of the school district is to make the funding available to all of the schools, elementary, middle schools, and high schools. So, because there's some organic aspects to how field trips become a reality, you know, I, I think, Angela, why don't you come up?
If you may, Enrique, I appreciate that, I read that. It still doesn't answer the question that I asked. And so Angela, when you're coming up here, the only thing I wanna make sure is, is it the principals or who's the one that's gonna be submitting, you know, for the request? Because again, I just wanna make sure that, you know, it's not necessarily on, on the teacher's responsibility to make these suggestions, because again, they're, they got plenty of other stuff going on with, with that piece. So it's, I just wanna make sure that each school, to some degree if possible, gets an allocation of somewhat spreading the money around equally. So that way they know however that might works out.
Thank you, thank you for this opportunity to share. We've had several meetings with the city. It's been very productive brainstorming ideas. And so, we came to a determination that we would take the hundred and twenty thousand and basically divided by the number of student population in the entire district to create a per capita amount. And so it's approximately ten dollars per student. That means a school with two hundred will get two thousand dollars of the funds. A school with four hundred will get four thousand dollars of the funds. And that was our way to be equitable across the schools. It doesn't mean that every student will get to go on a trip with the funds because ten dollars for a trip isn't sufficient, but at least it made it equitable based on the sizes of the school. At that point, then, the principals will work with their leadership teams to determine which additional field trips they want to do, or possibly expansions. And they will have some level of autonomy, but we have built into the process a district level of approval, as well as a city level of approval. It's written into the memo of agreement that no funds will be reimbursed for these trips without city approval of the chosen activity.
Thank you, that's very clear. I don't think that was in the reports, but I'm happy to hear that you guys are thinking about that because that's really what my concern was. Thank you.
And then for the few-
Thank you, Dr. Salazar.
Yes, thank you, thank you for being here today. For the, and then for the field trips, I know there's three categories. So, you know, one of the, when there's, when there's something like, let's say, you know, like a lot of our teams have been making it CIF, to special teams or organizations, they also apply for those specific purposes?
So, we're definitely going to explore along the way, but at our most recent principals' meeting, we actually did discuss this opportunity and shared with the principals an approximation of the amounts allocated. And with high schools in particular, they do have more funding than other schools because of their size. So they get more of our federal funding and our state funding based also on the population size. We also talked about how the intent was to create opportunities that don't already exist. So more than likely, those CIF trips will still get funded as they have always been in the past, and we would use this fund to do something more and different. And so, I'll use a different example of our STEM Academy. It has gone on some competitions, and we've been using other district funding to support those trips. Kids who are eligible have been going, they haven't had a denial of access, so that won't be necessary. And we really are trying to be in line with the vision of the city council when you allocated those funds to us several months ago, to expand opportunity. So if for some odd reason, there is a challenge for a student in an existing STEM Academy competition or sports, we already have a district system built in where the school can petition to the district for funds to help the kids who couldn't possibly do it on their own. So hopefully, we wouldn't need to access these funds for those types of situations because we want to honor the intent of the council to do more and different opportunities that hadn't existed in the past.
Okay. All right, are there any more questions?
I just, I just wanna say, I, I'm being part of CIF for four years while my son was in wrestling. They do pay for, for the CIF trip, they pay for the transportation, and they pay for the hotel stay since it's always away, and they pay for the entrance fee when it comes to CIF. So I, I am aware of that.
Okay, good, just wanna make sure that, you know, just, I guess, you know, one of the goals is to make sure that, you know, we don't have to see our athletes or our musicians or our artists out there having to, you know, fundraise selling boxes of chocolates when, you know, they should be preparing for their big event, and I have to worry about those funds, so.
I'm not gonna lie, there will probably still be fundraisers.
But not as many as, you know.
Yeah.
Right, possibly, but I'll be honest, you're still gonna see those chocolate bars coming across your doors.
One thing, mayor, there is, they do a lot of fundraising, yes, you're right, because it's, there isn't enough funds during the school year to, to provide funds for every single sport. I do know that, for example, for basketball, for football, for wrestling, they have camps that they can go to in the summer that they don't have funds for. For me, so maybe if some of that funding can go to that, because if you look at Mountview, you look at, example, different high schools that have amazing wrestling teams, that's because these students wrestle year-round, and they go to camps where they teach them special techniques. So maybe if we can allocate, not just wrestling, of course, but the rest of the sports, special camps that they can go to off-season, that would help our, our teams as well. Because for that, they do have to fundraise and pay on their own.
Of course, okay.
The only caveats we put in the agreement is one, that, that we not give the school, the district, funds to backfield their own funds. So, so that was very clear. We did say that, you know, there has to be an educational value. I mean, to the extent that a sport activity is tied to an educational value, I guess that's, that's how we can interpret that. But everything else, I think, is pretty, pretty much open.
Okay, good, nice. Great.
Yes.
Very nice. Okay, so I will make a motion to pass item number three. Can I get a second?
Second.
City clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor Manuel Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that, city clerk. And as we move to item number four, I believe, Sam, you have a presentation for us?
Yes, so in anticipation of some of the questions regarding the budgeting of the project, we did put a, a very short presentation outlining some of the funding. And if the council will indulge us, we'd like to go over some of the, you know, questions and budgeting regarding the project. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. All right, let's start first by sharing my screen.
So I've asked Romani, our engineering manager for the Polaworks Department, to prepare the, and present the information.
All right, good evening, mayor. Good evening, council members, city staff, and members of the audience. My name is Romani Basilius, and today I'm gonna present to you Susan Robio, Tocalo Park and Civic Center Plaza. Let me give you a brief history about this project. The Susan Robio Tocalo and Civic Centers Plaza will be a transformative project located at the heart of the city downtown, adjacent to City Hall at the intersection of Pacific and Main Avenue. It's right across the City Hall, so... This project will include Awakapo Plaza, a new park with public art pieces, retail space, monument sign, water conservation features, ID accessible pedestrian walkway, bike lanes, and dayfinding signage. Let me show you the existing condition right now of this project. As we can see here, this is the existing condition, and this section of the street gonna be vacated. As we go to the left side, we see this underutilized parking lot, which we're gonna transfer to a state-of-the-art park for the public use. We also see this building that we're gonna demolish, make more space. So this is rendering of the project, as we can see here. At the left bottom corner, we see the retail space that we're looking into building and leasing. In the center of the park, we have a monument. And right after this, on the top, we're gonna have a big Christmas tree for Christmas lightning and gathering for the public and city events. So on September twenty-first, the city advertised the project in the San Gabriel Tribune and posted the construction documents to Planet, on Planet Bids. By the way, Planet Bids is one of the biggest and, uh, biggest platform for project advertisement and bid documents. So we advertised the project on Planet Bids. And on October twelfth, the project bid was publicly opened, and the total of one bid was received. DCNC's Inc. of Los Alamitas gave us a bid in the amount of eight point nine million dollar. So let me break down the project for you. So this project has three different parts. The first one is the main plaza, street improvement, and it's, the cost for this part is about seven point three million dollar. The second section is the retail building for a cost of about three point seven million dollar. And finally, is the East Plaza for about, the cost of about one point six million dollar. Just to give you an explanation of what's going on, so the base bid was about eight point nine million dollar, which included the first and the third part. So the main plaza, street improvement, and East Plaza. We had the retail building as an option on the site, as adding to the project. So in this item that presented to the council members today, we're looking at doing item number one and two, which is the main plaza and the retail building. we're looking in doing item number one and two, which is the main plaza and the retail building. For the East Plaza, we're looking into having this project for a future development. In the future project, we might, we might include the East Plaza. So let's talk about the budget for the project. So as we can see here, we have, initially, we had a grant for $6 million from, it's a state grant. And we spent some money on design and traffic design study as well. So we right now have about $5.5 million, which is about 47% of the project. Reidentified funds. So long time ago, in our mind, in the designers of project, we had in mind to use Measure W Fund for about $1 million, which is gonna represent about 8% of this project. We have Quumpy for about $1.1 million of this project, and it's about 9%. And finally, SP1 for about, it's a $1.5 million, which is about 13%. SP1, it's a state tax fund, and we looking to use this money for the 100% street improvement. So, and we looking to request some funds today from two different resources. The first one is from ARPA. It's about $1.2 million, which is about 10% of the project cost. The second one is actually a loan from the Future Development for about $1.5 million. And it's free of interest, which is about 13% of this project. So today was asking about 23% of the project to be requested for funds. So that brings the total project cost to be about $11.8 million. Let me get into more details about the two requested funds. The first one is from ARPA. As we can see here, as the council members are aware of, we received about $22 million allocated from ARPA funds, and we split that into two halves. The first one was from the community set aside, which is about $11 million. And the second half was the city set aside for the other half. And today, we are not gonna touch the community set aside. We're gonna use the other city, which is set for projects towards the community. We're gonna have a revenue loss of about $1.2 million. That's what we're requesting today from the first fund. The second one is a loan from the Future Development Fund. So in this project, we're gonna build a retail, so building. So we're gonna ha, we can lease this building and we get revenue to the city. So we are estimating a revenue of about $10,000 to $12,000 per month, which is about $120 to $144K per year. Again, it's an estimate. And we looking and using this fund, 65% of it will go back to city programs, different city programs. And the 35%, we're gonna use to pay back the loan that we're gonna get. And again, it's, it's an interest-free loan to be paid back from leasing the retail space. And finally, it's gonna be 65% revenue to be used for various city programs. And that's, this is, concludes my presentation for today, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I pulled this item because I, I just wanted to speak to some new developments and also some changes from when we first were looking at this project. First of all, let me say thank you to staff for this great presentation. It was very well done and explained very well as to the funding sources. And I want to thank Sam and Public Works for working very diligently on this project. And I know that the council has made this project a priority. Early on, when we talked about it, maybe about a year and a half ago, I expressed that I would support any project that brings improvement to the community. But my concern with this project is that we're closing a section of Little Main between Pacific and Sterling Way. And I wanted to be really clear, and, and I would ask our deputy city clerk, Lord this Morales, to record that my concerns are that we're gonna close this street and it's gonna cause circulation issues along Pacific Avenue. Years ago, we implemented safe routes to school. Why? Because there were pedestrian vehicular collisions resulting in fatalities. One of those fatalities was a young girl on Main Avenue. So we did a road diet along Main Avenue that impacted Pacific. And it was over 10 years and community-driven after residents along Main Avenue complained about speeding and, you know, children crossing the street in very dangerous conditions. So we made those changes, and we've received so much pushback from the community. Although I will say that I do see a lot of cyclists using the, the bike lanes. And the residents along Main Avenue have expressed that they are happy about the traffic slowing down because it's safer for their families. But if we close this little section of Little Main between Pacific and Sterling Way, it's going to significantly impact the circulation of the traffic. It's gonna bottleneck Pacific Avenue and into Main Avenue and Ramona. And I don't think that's something that we are really taking into consideration right now. But I'll tell you, once we make those changes, our community is not gonna be happy. I, I mark my words, and please, Deputy City Clerk, please note this for the record, that I'm expressing concerns about this with regard to this project. I've expressed those concerns consistently since the beginning of this project. And I, you know, I've said that I would support it if we kept this street open. So here we are now, and the street is being closed. But in addition to that, we are looking at new funding sources. At the time that we were looking at this project, it was proposed to be about a $7 million project. And we, you know, allocated about $8 million. $6 million of that was from the state, per Senator Susan Rubio, and then about $2 million from local funds. But since then, we're now looking at additional funding that is worrisome for me. Specifically, there's $1.5 million that is coming from the Future Development Funds. And that will be paid back over 30 years. Okay, that's great. But what about housing needs now? So we're using $1.5 million for this park that could go towards creating affordable housing or other, other uses that benefit our community. Um, the other one was, was the ARPA. I was, I was concerned that ARPA was provided to cities so that we could, you know, assist our communities with, with the hardship that was created because of the pandemic. So, you know, I love the idea that we use ARPA funds to improve like our bathrooms at the facilities and, you know, families, I'm sure, are using our programs now more than ever after that pandemic. But that we're looking at $1.5 million of ARPA funds for this project, I feel like that's, that's, that is a reach for me. I'm sorry, $1.2 million. That is a reach for me. The other piece is the SB1 funds. We're also looking at $1.5 million of SB1 funds, which are the gas tax funds, and that is supposed to go towards the improvement of our streets. I've driven around in our, with our Public Works staff and have pointed out the different streets that need repair. And, you know, I've been a very strong advocate for repairing alleys and streets for as long as I've been a council member. So when I see $1.5 million going towards one project where the street's gonna be closed, I get, you know, and I'm glad that there is gonna be a buffer. That's good. That's good along Pacific. That if this project does move forward, which I'm sure that it will, that there is a buffer for pedestrian safety along Pacific. So my concern, though, is, you know, how we're using these funds. Because I would rather see $1.5 million go towards street improvement in the community. I just want to express, you know, that this is a different number altogether. Nearly $12 million for construction costs of a park that's gonna close the street, and it's beautiful. But, you know, if we were gonna propose a $12 million project, I think I would rather see a sports complex where thousands of our children could, you know, participate daily. So anyway, all of that said, I am at the place where I can't support this. Because I would rather use Future Development Funds for housing. I would rather use SB1 funds to repair our streets. And I would rather use ARPA funds to go directly to, for the benefit of, you know, of families and, you know, our community that's really gonna utilize this, this money. I think the Sokalo is, you know, it's, it's beautiful, and it will make an improvement. We've been wanting to improve that site for a long time now. But I just kind of question what it's going, who it's gonna serve exactly. And my concern is it's gonna create kind of a central park where we just kind of attract, you know, some of the negative element on a more regular basis versus occasional special events. So with that, I'm gonna say that I will not support this project.
Great, thank you. And City Clerk, Chief Deputy City Clerk, and go ahead and make sure you put me on the record as well. So this site has been going back and forth in discussion for far too long. If this park would have been built when it was first developed and when everything was planned ready, it would have cost the city $6 million. So this is the aftermath of what happens when you don't follow through with the, with the, with a project. Second, we just went through, we're going through inflation. Of course, the price is gonna change from last year. We, we have to hire people with livable wages. We have to give them benefits, and that's just the way it works. Everybody knows that. So we, the inflation is no secret to anybody. Second, we're talking about closing the street. Personally, I've never heard anybody compliment Main Street. I hear constant annoyance about it because it takes us 20 to 30 minutes to get to the freeway before we even get on. So I just have to disagree with that comment wholeheartedly. You know, about closing the street, you know, you, you were, the old council was planning on building 80 units here with no parking. Where were those cars gonna park? That was gonna cause congestion. You know, we're talking about money. You know, I can only assume that if the Rome development here, Phase 3 went through, it was gonna be the exact same thing that happened with the lot right next to the police department, where we give somebody a loan to buy something off of us. It's been six years, and we haven't even seen a million dollars in return. So, you know, I think it's just important that we're honest about this, and I don't think this is about the money. I've seen the council spend money on worse things that they're bringing a return, like Be Proud, where we were almost in a $10 million deficit. Who is this gonna benefit? It's gonna benefit everybody. Because we know that we're park poor for one. We've been park poor for decades. People keep talking about wanting a downtown that they can enjoy, and this is what it's gonna bring. And that's what it's gonna bring. It's bringing development. If we're talking about affordable home, housing, you know, I, I presented a plan to build affordable housing just across the street, and nobody supported it. So I don't think that that's what this is about, you know, and I just have to be honest about that. I don't think that that's what it's about. You know, we've had the opportunity to support housing. We've had the opportunity to support our streets. You know, every time we have an idea, we always think about another idea last minute, what we could have done with it. You know, we're never gonna get anywhere like that. And so, you know, I wholeheartedly support this project. Did the price go up? Of course it did. We're going through inflation. Is this gonna benefit everybody? Yes. And so to me, it's an important project. It's a great project, and it's time to just seal it, get it done. And just, everybody has to realize that old projects are not coming back. The Sokalo is gonna be built, and it's gonna be something that everybody can enjoy.
Mayor?
Yes?
Thank you.
I, I agree with the comments that you're saying. This project has been in the works for years, back when Senator Rubio and Councilmember Cruzbaca were, were on board where this project was originally approved. And, and it wouldn't have cost what it is costing now. It was in, it was already planned. It was developed. It was ready. It was shovel-ready, pretty much. Correct, Sam? It was shovel-ready, but the project was canceled. They were all voted, and the project was canceled exactly for that because they wanted to bring the Rome project, and they were going to close the street. And we were going to have problems with parking. At that time, I was a city clerk. When I became a council member four years ago, the first thing that I brought up was the Sokalo. I asked Sam to bring out the plans. He brought out the plans. He, he did a presentation, and it died right there. It did not continue. And as the mayor say, said, inflation has caused everything to go up. But because we have waited and we had sat on this project for years and years, our community would have been enjoying the Sokalo by now. It would have been up. We would have had more activities. Every time I went to the concerts in the park or the street market, the community is so excited that we're bringing these type of opportunities for them, this entertainment. And they're always asking, what are we doing next year? Where are we having an event? Always looking for new fun events to do in our community. I absolutely agree that the Sokalo should have been built a long time ago, but we can't live in the past. We do need to move forward. Unfortunately, the cost is what it is. And we have the funding, and we will continue to look for funding, and that needs to be built. Our community deserves a nice place, an additional park, because we are park poor. So I, I also agree in continuing this project and accepting the funding that, the allocations that you have provided so we can continue on the project. It's a beautiful project. That Main Street, it's a mess. It's hard. If you're trying even to make a right turn, you can sit there for five to 10 minutes because you cannot come across. The last time we had the, the Christmas, the toy giveaway, a child almost got hit crossing the street right there because it is so wide, people speed, and there's no safety nets there. And now with the Sokalo there, people are not gonna be speeding down Main Street. I've been wa, talking to customers, our customers, excuse me, our community members right there on Main, and the cars just speed by. There is no room for anybody to, to try to cross the street because they're just flying by there, and they use that street to just fly through town to get to the other side. So it's not safe for the residents that live on Main Street. It's not safe for us to turn onto Pacific, whether we're, forget about making a left turn. There is no way we will make, ever make a left turn from there. So closing that street, it's actually going to bright, provide a safety net for our community. It will make it better. And we will have more places for our community to enjoy. So I definitely agree with continuing with the project. And Mayor, if you would like to make the motion?
If I may, before you do that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Hernandez, you have some comments as well?
Or Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem?
Go ahead. Councilmember, I'll go after you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. Again, I'm excited to see this project come through. You know, my concern, speaking with a lot more residents in regards to just outreach and so forth along the Little Main, I think that's, that's an issue for me. You know, the other pieces, of course, you know, allocating $1.5 million that can be used for affordable housing. That's exactly right. You know, inflation is high, and it's gonna continue. And our residents are struggling. So why shouldn't we use some of that funding to help, you know, build those affordable housing opportunities? Grants, more importantly, they can be done for first-time home buyers, you know, low interest or no interest grants for our residents so they don't have to move out of our city. So those are the things that I'm concerned about, and I'd like to use that money in that sense. Sam, just out of curiosity, if we were to not close the streets, you know, along Little Main, what would be the cost savings generally? I mean, I'm not gonna hold you to beat the fire, but generally, what would that cost savings be if you leave that section open? With, of course, a little improvement and so forth?
Sure. Yeah, no, thank you. So, so long as that being a whole to it, the estimate is around $1.6 million.
Okay. So again, my, my suggestion would be to, you know, leave that street open that, with some of the improvements. And also to, you know, speak, speak to what Councilmember Avila just spoke to, is the safety concerns. I think we can mitigate those parts because I've ridden my bike through there time after time. You know, I do it quite often when I'm just going to Portos or wherever I might be going to, and it's dangerous. If you're a cyclist, I'm telling you now, you do not want to go through that corner because it's been several times that I've almost been hit. I've seen other people almost get hit.
I've seen other people almost get hit. So again, the speeding is a concern. But again, the other part that I'm also concerned is, I don't think we've actually done any good outreach to the residents along that area. We've not, we have not done that. No one's told me that we've done an extensive outreach or any type of outreach besides just, you know, posting it on our website. That's not outreach.
Oh, no, I was just going to mention that Ron, myself and Victor did do a walkthrough and we visited with all of the businesses there. But you're right. So we did engage with them. We told them all about the project.
I understand the businesses, but again, the residents down Sterling Way, down Island, down Main and all those other areas. I think they need to know what's happening. And it's one of those things, again, I have no problem with the project. I think it's going to be beautiful and nice passive park. Because that's what it is. It's going to be a passive park where people are going to go and relax and, you know, inspired to have poems or whatever the case may be, read a book and so forth. But again, using one point five million dollars of affordable housing for this type of project is not something that sits well for me. In addition to that, I have concerns in regards to Measure W. You know, Sam, I know you've shared with me, but I think that's, I think we're misusing the Measure W. A million dollars for something that that this funds, that these funds are for is to clean and also do recycling water projects, you know, putting some storm drains to capture some of the groundwater in this project is not, you know, we have better opportunities. I know of certain streets that I've shared with you, Sam, and others, that the the water just strains. So those are things that are important to our communities and so forth. Not necessarily using a million dollars for a project for parks. When we have residents, you know, calling me, and I'm sure they called many of you, asking about, when can I get my street? When can I get my alley repaired and so so forth. So for that reason, I can't support the funding the way it is. I'd be open to conversation to see if we can save some of that cost savings by, again, leaving the openness of Little Main with some improvements and safety improvements. Because again, that is a big concern for myself. Certainly be open to that conversation, but the way it is, as it stands, I think we're, this is an overly bloated project the way it is. And again, if you guys don't do it, don't do the retail part of it, that's the other part is, you know, then there's no way of ever getting repaid
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead and then I'll have an extra.
So a couple of things. So I know that we were discussing the closure of Little Main. We've had various presentations regarding this project over the last year and a half. And one of our options were, what would it look like or what would it be like if we closed Little Main or we left it open? We all agreed that closing Little Main was to the best interest because if we do build a civic plaza there, a park plaza there, and we leave Little Main open, it's going to jeopardize the public safety of the children that are visiting the area. So that's the reason why we decided to close Little Main. Now, I've had this conversation with several people that were concerned about closing Little Main. However, right now, people are upset because of the shrinking of Main from literally Arrow Highway all the way to Pacific because the project was what was was a failure. That nobody used the bikes. The bikes are gone. And so now you have people complaining about that. There's nothing for them to be able to justify the shrinking of the streets. When you bring in a development like this to our downtown, so that we can start to develop an actual downtown and attract different businesses so that we can generate more revenue, then that is a sacrifice that's worth doing because now you're sacrificing, closing that little street for a project that we've wanted as a community for many years. Now, we've already spent over a million dollars on this project. There was over five hundred thousand dollars spent back in, I don't know if it was twenty fifteen, when this project was shovel ready and the city council at the time decided to shove the project and move forward with giving this to Rome to build apartments. And what happened? We lost five hundred thousand dollars. Now we've already spent another five hundred thousand dollars for new design. So now we're out a million dollars. Is it? Is it responsible for us to go and spend a million dollars and say, you know what? Forget it. We changed our mind. We're not going to go with this project? What are we going to do with the million dollars that we've already spent? That's reckless. Reckless is when you give it the land like where the Palomera projects are at over here on Ramona Boulevard and Badillo to a developer to build these units and then you reduce the price because they couldn't build the units they thought they were going to build. Yet we sell the only historical building that we have left, which was a red brick building. They retrofitted it. We pay another four hundred fifty thousand dollars to purchase this back from the developer. And what happens to this building? It's sitting there vacant. Is that responsible? So talk about responsibilities. We need to make the right decisions here and making sure that we're not just throwing money out the window. Yes, I understand that the cost of this is a lot more than I wanted to spend, but the six, seven million dollar estimate was back in twenty fifteen. Here we are, seven, eight years later. We can't expect for this project to cost the same. Now, I understand that there's, you know, Measure W, Quimby and SB one funds. Sam, from my understanding, you had already set aside this money from these particular funds for the Socalo project, correct?
That is correct.
Now, the ARPA, we had twenty two million dollars that we received in ARPA funding from the federal government for us to be able to use to either rebuild or renovate our failing infrastructure in the city. So what we did was we allocated fifty percent for the community and fifty percent for the city. So this is a portion from what's coming out of the city. The Future Development Fund, one point five million dollars? Well, I think you're estimating it at three dollars per square foot and I think it's very cheap for that retail location. But if you have three units that you're building there for retail space and you lease them out, you have two units of fourteen hundred square feet, one at twelve hundred square feet. If you lease this out at three fifty per square foot, you're going to end up receiving a total of fourteen thousand dollars monthly estimated. If we do a one point five million dollar loan, interest free, and we amortize this over thirty years, our payment roughly on that is going to be four thousand one sixty seven. So that's still going to leave us a profit of approximately ten thousand dollars a month. So we're not going to be losing money and we're going to be paying back this loan. For me, I think this is something that's needed. I don't want to spend a million dollars and just let it go down the drain and forget about this and come back and figure out what we're going to build in this in this area there that's an eyesore too many. I think our community deserves better. I think our community has been wanting a downtown that they can be proud of, that they can come and congregate with their friends and family, and that we can attract different types of businesses. Because all I hear out there is, all we're getting are Jack in the Boxes, Starbucks, McDonald's. That's all that we're hearing and other cities are bringing in different types of businesses. So it's time that we start step up, step it up and start to attract these other types of businesses and bring them to Baldwin Park because our residents deserve better. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that. Mayor Protem and I agree. And then just real quick, ARPA, it was designed to help our residents, yes. And we've done that. That's why we allocated half of it for our residents and the other was to help ease the struggles that came from the pandemic. So that's what we're doing here. I hear a lot of people kind of complain or try to talk about the council spending this money. Well, that's what it was for. It's a one-time-use money that you get to use on infrastructure, your community and benefiting it. We're talking about needing revenue. We need to upgrade our downtown. And then for affordable housing, Councilwoman Avila, I think you were there. I think when we said no to the Rome project, which before Rome was luxury condos, so this has never been about affordable housing. I believe when we said no to that project, we said, why don't we allocate ten million dollars to affordable homeownership opportunities? And the very same people talking about affordable housing now didn't even entertain it. This has never been about affordable housing. Across the street, empty lot. You could have built affordable housing there. It wasn't built. You were trying to build market rate condos. Alomera, city property, you could have built affordable housing there. You built market rate condos. So this has never been about affordable housing. And to be honest, council doesn't have a record of building affordable housing. So it's just time to be honest and just say whether you want the project or not.
Mayor, I'd like to add to your comments. I know that you like to disregard the Rome project, but that project brought seventy one affordable units to our community. We received a thousand applications for that project. And we were trying to have a phase, another phase very close by that would not have closed Little Main, that would have kept Little Main open. So I I think what happens with this council is it tries to recreate history often to benefit, you know, the narrative today. But I do, I do disagree that we had an affordable housing project on the table, which this council do, you know, they declined, they opposed it. And so I disagree with you. I disagree with you that, you know, the the there has been efforts before you were mayor, before this council, you know, this quote unquote new council was here, there were efforts to bring affordable housing to the community. And actually, that's when we started working with Habitat for Humanity. We brought in Rome. There have been different senior projects, including Telacoo, even long before I was a council member. So I know that you like to dismiss the efforts of others so that it benefits your narrative. But I definitely want to say that the city has had a good number of affordable housing projects and we were planning on doing more. But that's neither here nor there because that was, that was removed from the table more than a year ago. And what we're looking at is this park. So I've I've expressed my concerns and everybody else has expressed their opinion. So at this point, like I said, I I oppose moving forward with this project as proposed. Again, because my concerns are closing the street and then the funding sources. If there's a reworking of it, great, we'll consider it. But that's where I stand at this point. So go ahead and make a motion.
I will make the motion when I'm ready and I am the chair of this meeting and so I will talk as long as I need to. And you're going to have to respect that. I heard you. Have some respect.
I am listening.
You don't have to, we don't know, we don't want to smell your breath, first off. And second off, this was never about affordable housing, Monica. We know that E and A didn't go through because they weren't doing their job because they were relying on people like you who were taking thousands of dollars from them to let them give them a free pass. We know what the contract was like on the first one and you tried to change that as well. The only person here that changes their narrative and it doesn't take responsibility for their actions is you. So with that being said. I'm talking, I'm talking, I'm talking, excuse me, I'm talking here and you need to respect that. So before I make a motion, I do want the council to consider adding extra ARPA funds so that we just complete the full project. I don't want to see this project be completed, be semi-complete and then we have retail, we have an empty space where the retail should go. I'm sorry, but you're talking out of turn. So this is what we're going to do. We're going to take a five-minute break and then we will come back. So we'll be back at nine thirty six. Mark, are we all set?
Yes, we are aligned.
Great. So we are reconvening back in open session. I'll make a motion to pass item number four with the necessary adjustments to make sure that the phase including the buildings gets built. Can I get a second?
Mayor, for clarification, is that the eleven million dollars?
Correct. Great, thank you. City clerk, roll call please.
Thank you. Mayor Emmanuel Estrada? Councilmember Alejandro Avila? Councilmember Paul Hernandez? Councilmember Monica Garcia? Mayor Protem Daniel Damian? Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that. Maria, can you share with us the potential date for groundbreaking?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, the groundbreaking ceremony is scheduled for Thursday, October twenty seventh at eleven AM here at City Hall at the courtyard.
Great, thank you. So we expect to see everybody there. Move on to City Council acting as successor agency of the dissolved Community Development Commission. There's a consent calendar. I'll make a motion to pass that consent calendar. Can I get a second? City clerk, roll call please.
Thank you. Mayor Emmanuel Estrada? Councilmember Alejandro Avila? Councilmember Paul Hernandez? Councilmember Monica Garcia? Mayor Protem Daniel Damian? Motion passed.
Great, thank you for that. So we are at our Finance Authority regular meeting. I will make a motion to pass that consent calendar. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. City clerk, roll call please.
Thank you. Mayor Emmanuel Estrada? Mayor Protem Daniel Damian? Councilmember Alejandro Avila? Councilmember Monica Garcia? Councilmember Paul Hernandez? Motion passes.
And then we have our Housing Authority and we have a consent calendar. Can I make a motion to pass that consent calendar? Can I get a second?
Second.
City clerk, roll call please.
Thank you. Mayor Emmanuel Estrada? Mayor Protem Daniel Damian? Councilmember Alejandro Avila? Councilmember Monica Garcia? Councilmember Paul Hernandez? Motion passes.
Great, thank you. I believe, we, city clerk, do we have one more meeting?
No, Mayor, that is all.
Okay, great. So just double checking. I did want to make sure if PD and Parking Enforcement can check on the truck parking zone on Arrow just to clarify semis can park there or not. I know some people like to park there for lunch and they may be getting some warnings. Just clarity on the map of where that parking zone is. You know, I did have one more issue and I think it's a very important one. You know, a couple of years ago, there was the state audit that found that there was a potential pension spiking. And so as the DOJ brings out more and more information, it seems that there may have been something there. And if that's the case, I want our city to keep an eye on it because I don't believe that that pension should be being paid for by city taxpayers. I just want everybody to keep that in mind. So at this moment, we will reconvene in closed session.
City Mayor, if I may before?
Yes, go ahead.
Chief, if I can get that report back when we talked about, when we were talking about the homeless task force and so forth, of what it looked like to either assign or hire a new police officer. That was back in September, so get back to us with that written report.
But, yes, sir, we will, but as of, as of Monday, we have an officer that has been assigned permanently permanently to that position to work nothing but homeless and park issues. And that's a result of Officer Jeremy Moranaby has been back there. He was hired. So we were able to replace him with our, to bring Officer Jim Izzo into that fold. So that's his assignment. And we'll be able to give an idea as to how much time he's spending with our homeless issues, the number of contacts he's making and those kind of things. In addition to the things we're looking at with La Cotta and Crisis Response Team as well. So I'll get with you and tell you.
Perfect. I appreciate that. And then, in that sense, we can talk later. It's just, again, I just don't want it to impact, you know, the patrol services and so forth.
And that's, I was very cautious about that and it didn't.
We'll talk about that in a second or at a later time. So thank you for that.
Great, thanks. So at this moment, we will reconvene in closed session.